All right. Good evening, everyone. We are back. And I'd like to ask trustee, who's our clerk now? Trustee Prendergast to report out actions taken in closed session.
Thank you. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved an exception to Board Policy 4345 to allow for a catastrophic leave donation of approximately three days to a full-time classified employee at Irvine Valley College. That's all we have.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to ask trustee Milchekar to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Prendergast.
Let us give thanks for the blessings we enjoy, starting with a beautiful evening in Southern California, and of course, for our two incredibly wonderful colleges and ATEP. Blessings for our energetic, enthusiastic, excellent professors, classified staff, administrators, and students. And as we come to begin to conduct business of our board, we request wisdom and guidance for our board trustees in achieving all of our goals and inspiration for all of our wonderful students. We ask that the members in attendance be inspired and that their time at this meeting be worthwhile, and we pray for peace. Amen.
Please join me in saluting the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we have two requests for public comment. We have Jennifer Pacula, followed by Sessa Heard Johnson. And I'd like to ask if you guys could please keep your comments to two minutes. And Jennifer, if you could come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. There we go. My name is Jennifer Pacula, and I'm faculty here at Saddleback, and I'm co-chair of the OER, or Open Educational Resources, work group. And we just wanted to, or we as a whole work group wanted to come, but I'm here, to thank Dr. Anderson and Vice President Avalos for all of their support. And we have a lot of great news happening right now that we wanted to take the two minutes to share with you. So, starting March 9th, faculty will be able to flag courses in the schedule as ZTC, zero textbook cost. And students will be able to search for ZTC courses by one click in the class schedule. So, this is very exciting. It's also a state law that colleges identify these courses. We have 72 courses on campus that are zero textbook cost, and an additional 41 courses going through the exploration and adoption phase. With the number of students per course and courses taught by faculty, we're estimating that the total number of courses will annually save students $1 million. So, this is amazing from where we were two years ago, when there was only six courses on campus that were ZTC. So, from the support from the president and the vice president, we've really been able to make such great momentum with our work. We found out, working with the counselors, that we're only three courses short of having an entire zero path. So, for the CSU general education path, we're only missing three courses in Section A1, A3, and B4. And once we get faculty in those three sections to convert, a student could start and finish Saddleback with never buying a textbook. And then, we worked with the Office of Planning, Research, and Accreditation last semester. 1,756 students who took zero textbook cost courses were surveyed. 67% of those students stated that the cost of textbooks influences their enrollment in courses. Of those students, 90% said that the resources in their courses were the same quality or higher than traditional textbooks, and that about 90%, 89% responded that the open educational resources were a better value than the traditional textbooks. So, we're very excited with the momentum, and we're thankful for the support from administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Acting Chancellor Fallow and members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Sessa Heard Johnson, Director of Student Life and Equity Programs at Irvine Valley College. And I just wanted to take some time to share with you, we were very excited about our homecoming activities this upcoming, or this past month, and so I just wanted to share with you all what that was. So, we had over 2,000 students who voted in our homecoming elections process in the fall, which is a 600% increase from the previous year. We basically selected 10 students through that process, and those 10 students attended leadership meetings, learned the history of Irvine Valley College, homecoming, they did outreach, they worked through events and activities on the campus, they attended our Foundation Board of Governors meeting. We went through a selection process that represented administrators, students, faculty, and staff to select them. We also this year had a homecoming dance, oh yes, we did. We had 200 students who came, 200 faculty, staff, and students who came, mostly students, who came to a dance on a Friday evening in our gym. We also had alumni, so we had the previous year's alumni and homecoming court join us for that. And so, it was really awesome. And so, I just wanted to introduce our two folks selected to be homecoming king and queen. Sergio Garcia, he majors in communications, and he'd like to become a journalist for UNICEF or a reporter at BuzzFeed. And then, we have Amaya Savoy Easton. She's majoring in cinema and television, and she wants to be a casting director, so that people can see themselves in the media and be inspired to achieve their dreams. And so, Sergio and Amaya are here with us today. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think now we're on to, we're on to board reports. And I'd like to turn to my right, and let's start with trustee Lang. Going different order.
As many of you have come to expect, every once in a while, I choose to digress on subjects that I think are important, but perhaps only tangentially related to our community college district. Tonight is one of those nights. We're fortunate, I think, to have wonderful police officers at both Saddleback and Irvine Valley Colleges, who I am most grateful to for keeping our students and employees safe on a daily basis. Police officers at both our institutions do a great job of cooperating and coordinating with the county sheriffs and with our local city police forces. Although we have had quite serious instances of both colleges during my tenure on the board, which called for our officers to exercise their judgment of authority to keep the peace and prevent these situations from escalating on a grander scale, in general, I think we've been quite fortunate over the years with respect to enforcement actions. I think we were all stunned by the recent shootings in Florida, and hopefully sensitive to the fact that that could have been us or any one of our community colleges throughout the state that might have faced this situation. Perhaps we should even be more frightened by this event, given that we're dealing with an older student population on our campuses. In this trustee's opinion, we need to adopt national measures that make it more difficult for people with mental health issues, those associated with hate groups, and others that have an intent to harm to obtain assault weapons. For too long, the majority of people, according to surveys, who believe, as I do, that rational gun control laws are critical to the well-being of our population, have been ignored by special interest groups whose voices up till now have been louder and better financing, financed in perpetuating the status quo. It's unfortunate that it's taken this latest tragedy to perhaps finally turn the corner on the stranglehold that the gun lobby has had over our legislators. Let's hope that perhaps we could now take sensible measures that both respect the intent of the Second Amendment and the security of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Jay.
Basically, I have no report. I've been out of the country for four weeks on a once-in-a-lifetime trip. I have a deeper appreciation for the blessings we have here in this country, and a deeper, deeper appreciation for what our community colleges do. And I was so grateful to see Saddleback Mountain while driving up Crown Valley to get to this meeting.
Thank you very much, trustee Jay. Well, I'll do my report. I had the opportunity to appear on Laguna Woods TV to talk about ATEP and a lot of the other great things that are happening in our district, and that is always a fun appearance. On Friday, I attended with many of you in the room, President Anderson, Dean Tang and others, the South Orange County Economic Coalition's economic forecast. It was an outstanding turnout. Dean Tang did a superb job rolling out the economic data in South Orange County, some of which is not that promising, but I think offers some opportunities to us here at our district and for both Saddleback College and potentially Irvine Valley College as well. So, I want to thank the team and Greg, Gregory, for your remarks as well. Thought it was well done. Finally, and I thank you trustee Lang for your comments. I'm, like everyone else, I'm heartbroken over the recent massacres at Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. We had defenseless students, faculty, and staff gunned down by Nicholas Cruz using an AR-15-style semi-automatic rifle and multiple magazines. I'm a parent of a high school kid. I've been a parent of a high school kid who recently graduated. I'm also an elected official, like everyone else, of a school board, and it's obvious we can do a lot better. We all need to do better. I believe in the Constitution as much as anyone else, but I also believe that our country need not choose between the protection of responsible gun ownership and prevention of massacres like the one at Stoneman Douglas High School. And this is a ridiculous choice that seems at times to be presented. That kind of violence doesn't belong in our society, and those kind of military-grade weaponry does not belong anywhere in our, in our schools, public or private. I think we all were riveted, as was I, I think maybe that's the wrong word, riveted, but astounded by the students and their response. I mean, absolutely amazing, the way they spoke, how articulate they were, and they're having an impact. And I'm confident that our future's in good hands, because I think the students at Stoneman Douglas are representative of our students across the country. So, I think going forward, we'll be in good hands as a country. Thank you. Trustee Milchekar.
Yeah, thank you. I know all of our hearts were broken by that horrible mass shooting. I attended the South Orange County Economic Coalition, where a woman, Sherry Friedenrich, who I ran together with when she ran for the Orange County Tax Collector, I kept seeing her everywhere that I was. And now, I'm seeing her a lot too, so she must be up for reelection. And she spoke, and then the Orange County taxpayer, Carolyn Savici, spoke also, and they talked about the economic forecast for Orange County, which of course, our own Gregory Anderson and Tony Tang spoke about recently. So, it's pretty important for us to learn about that and to know which are the growing fields for our students, to make sure our students get jobs that pay high wages. So, I know that's, that's part of our playbook, and we're doing that, so that's great. I also attended Dr. Richard Snead's Celebration of Life. He was the first chancellor I hired, and he was a wonderful, wonderful man. He put his healing hands on our district, and everyone started getting along and getting along together, and it was a wonderful number of years with him as chancellor, and he really taught me how to be a good trustee, and it was really, truly educational. Of course, he had healing hands, because he had been a Jesuit priest. This is some of the things I didn't know about him until I read about it in the paper the next day after we selected him, but he was fabulous. I also attended the Saddleback College Baseball Field's grand reopening, and Gregory Anderson did a fabulous job throwing out the first pitch. I've never seen a first pitch so wonderfully done. So, really. And so, it's been a very good month, so thank you. Thank everybody, except for the tragedy. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, so just a quick touch on things. Last January, I attended the Orange County School Board Association Board Meeting, which I'm a member of, thanks to my friends on the board here, appointed me to that. And so, we have arranged Dean Tang and the Orange County Workforce Development Task Force Group is going to make a presentation at the May meeting regarding how that can be beneficial for the K-12 districts, as well as the other community colleges in our area. So, we're looking forward to that presentation. Glad we were able to arrange that. I also attended the Astounding Inventions on January 27th. Took the obligatory selfie of all the kids, and got to help hand out the ribbons and make a little speech, and that was a very nice event, as usual. And then, I also attended the baseball grand reopening of the stadium, though I do have a critical remark, that we need a much, much better way of keeping the baseballs from hitting the cars in the parking lot, because mine was close to being one of them. But yeah, any foul ball that goes off that third baseline is dangerous. And so, I don't know, we might want to add to the grand reopening if we can. Just kind of dovetailing on some of the comments, obviously, I am a high school teacher and a parent of a high school student, and it is always very concerning. I also happen to teach American Government, and we touch on the Second Amendment. I have an assignment in my class where they have to write a letter to a legislative or executive leader on an issue important to them. I give them about three months to write it. They almost all take up to the last minute of the due date to do it. This is the first time in my eight years of teaching this class, I got over half my students turned their letter early on this issue. And that says something. It's moving them. And I think that's important, that we don't lose sight, that this is not a generation of lazy people. They just needed something to get behind, and now they have it.
All right, thank you. Trustee Wright.
Thank you. I have a short report that I'd like to give this evening. On Wednesday, February the 7th, I attended the men's basketball team here at Saddleback College. They played Orange Coast, and they lost by three points. My daughter was with me, her and her husband, they live in Alaska, she was here, so we went to that ballgame. And then, we attended the Saddleback College Baseball Field Grand Opening. And my son-in-law thought that the college president was very good. He says he's, I, he says presidents usually aren't that good, so he congratulated Jews as being very easy to talk to. On Tuesday, February the 13th, I attended the men's basketball game at IVC, where Saddleback and IVC were playing against one another. At halftime was the crowning of the king and queen of the homecoming event, so it was a wonderful event that evening. Actually, Saddleback won the game that evening. I am looking forward to a couple of events coming in March. One is the IVC Foundation Awards Dinner. That's going to be on March the 10th, and then also Saddleback College's Stadium Groundbreaking, and that's going to be on Monday, March the 12th. And then, finally, I want to just applaud both college presidents for the report that they sent out. It was there. I mean, Saddleback College had a wonderful report that they had, and IVC, Lynn Rockmore had a wonderful report too. I just want to applaud them for their, for their good job on these reports. They're very well done.
Thank you. And to bring us home, trustee Witt.
I have tonight a little bit more to report, some things I didn't attend, but some things I want you to know about. And the first thing I want to share with you, and it didn't come from President Rockmore's report, but it came from my computer, and that was, I don't know if you know about the Asian Pacific Islander Scholarship? And I was really impressed. Last year, we received one scholarship. This year, six students from IVC received that scholarship. That's huge. What a difference you've made. Thank you very much. And then, I also wanted to report or share another happening at IVC that really touched me. I am big into soft skills. You can be the best of the best, but if you can't communicate that, or can't communicate with the people that you work with, or the people that you work for, I believe it's all for naught. And I want to say that I want to congratulate IVC and Dr. Rothmore for putting so much effort into the Western Association of Chamber Executives to win that award, and I just want to say congratulations, because that is huge. And for any of you who are teaching and you want to send your students, I see here on April 7th, you're going to have another event. It's called Career Edge. And I know that I have taught, I have created a course where, believe it or not, in nursing, to put a course in compassion, you think, wow, really? Yes. Sometimes, it's not a gifted quality, and sometimes we have to learn how to do it. The most important thing, I believe, about compassion is listening. And some people don't know how to listen, listen, and some people do not know soft skills. So, thank you very much for putting that together. Okay, I have to hurry. I also want to give my, here, here to the mental health, or our mental health programs here, and we talked about Florida, everyone. It's not just the guns, it's the mental health that we have to worry about, seriously. And for Saddleback and IVC to receive $350,000 in a grant is huge, and this happened before Florida. We already know those problems. It is serious, and we have to recognize it. If we say that we have brain cancer, oh my goodness, everybody listens. If we say that we are bipolar, oh yeah, right. I mean, seriously, we have to change our attitude towards this. And thank you for those on the committee who worked so hard to get this $350,000, because it'll be put to good use. I also have to say, I really commend the nursing program for implementing this new interdisciplinary industry-recognized national certificate. It's the first time that we're offering it, first school to be certified here at Saddleback College. Thank you very much to the dean of the nursing program. Oh, I got, I was invited to be a patient, and, oh, talk about fun. But I was late, because I was at another meeting, but I watched everyone. What happened was, the first semester nursing students invited retired faculty to be their patients. Isn't that nice, that they practice on retired people first? So, at any rate, I just want to say, if you ever get asked, do it. It's fun, because I told them, I don't want just health sciences. Go out into the math department, go out into ASG, go out and find people that really may not know what to say to you, and then you'll figure it out. And one more thing, the baseball game was great, and the president's excitement was as good as the game. And I don't know if you guys knew about this, I know I'm over, but on Saturday, just this last Saturday, do you know what we had on this campus? We had 400 people here, young adults, who spent the day learning about empowerment, healthy relationship, and how to break the cycle of domestic violence. And I want to applaud the organizer of this, Dr. Caldwell. She hosted, this was the first annual festival that we had here, and it was with Laura's House and, what's that clothing store? Tilly's, and all of them, and everything was donated, even the food. And I think the food was, was pretty good. I forgot what it was called. But anyway, they had a featured speaker here, and it was all day with 400 people coming here, and young adults, and also 100, 100 students have already applied from high school to come into Saddleback. What a great double play. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor's report.
I'd truly like to associate myself with all of the comments about gun violence and safety, and Vice Chancellor Gable will have some comments about what we're doing here in this district. And I'd surely like to hope that our board can be as successful as they are here in the district as getting, as we're getting closer to spring with some winter rains. That's the end of my comments.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor. And I'll move on to student trustee Larson.
Yes, my condolences go out to the victims of the Florida massacre. However, with this negative news comes a great movement that has never been seen before. Many young students and people are being involved in this debate. There's a very noticeable energy on our colleges in regards to this tragedy, and I hope that we can grow from this and move forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, student trustee Larson. College presidents' reports. Saddleback College.
Thank you, Board President Jamal. Before I start, the only thing I can take credit for is the pitch. That has nothing to do with the faculty and staff. Everything else that I'm going to mention to, is mentioned tonight, is dependent on the contributions of the faculty and the staff. The pitch was slow but accurate, so I guess that's perhaps a good approach for a new college president. First of all, I'm going to talk very quickly, because I have quite a few announcements. I'm thrilled that the board will have the opportunity to choose to approve the hire of Dr. Richard Stordy, right here, as Saddleback College's new VP of Administrative Services. He brings 30 years of senior college leadership, public service, and private industry management experience to our college. Right now, he's the CBO at Pasadena Community College District. With your grace, he'll be our new vice president tomorrow. I'm also thrilled that the board will have the opportunity to approve the hire of Esther Gravis, as Saddleback College's interim Assistant Dean of Health Sciences and Human Services. You recall that you all approved Dr. Pestallosi as our new dean, and she needs an assistant dean. Esther currently serves as the Assistant Director of Nursing at Saddleback College and has been full-time nursing faculty since 2012. Prior to Saddleback, Esther taught at El Camino Colleges, specializing in pediatrics for 10 years. A couple of quick things about our Emeritus Institute. Its head and the dean of community education and K-12 partnerships as well, Dr. Estelle Castillo-Garrison, will receive the 2018 Pepperdine University Association, California Association of Bilingual Education Visionary Award in Sacramento. Also, the Emeritus Institute was bequest, received a bequest of $630,000 upon the passing of Dr. Robert C. Harmon, who passed last summer. Dr. Harmon began taking classes in 2003 and never missed a semester for the next 14 years, taking over 132 classes in our Emeritus program. Thanks as well to Board President Jamal, Vice Chancellor Weiss, and Vice Chancellor Gable for attending the South Orange County Economic Coalition luncheon. The full report, which will have balanced sometimes not-so-good news, but some very wonderful opportunities for both IVC and Saddleback, that's coming out in September. Thanks to Dean Tony Tang for all his leadership and the rest of the team on that. Final thing is, I want to recognize Professor Emily Quinlan, who's providing, please wave in the back. There she is. She's providing statewide leadership for what's called the Pathway to Law School. And I had the opportunity this weekend to participate on a panel in San Francisco. So, we had, we had DAs, we had big shot lawyers from famous firms, and she's a bit of a superstar there, because she's one of the prime faculty movers behind that. So, with that, I really hope that anybody has the opportunity, all of you have the opportunity to attend the groundbreaking ceremony for the sports complex, as was mentioned earlier, March 12th, 4:30 PM, at the football stadium. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Irvine Valley College.
Well, I'm grateful that I learned of the pitching arm early, before we get into arm wrestling here. Tonight, I want to just make a few introductions, as usual. And so, we have our first-year faculty in the tenure process here tonight. So, coming from the Disabled Students Program and Services, we have Brianna Daniels. If you could stand. I also have from our Geography Department, John Rossiter. Thank you, John. From Political Science, Shirin Sahani. There she is. Okay. And then, finally, from the English Department is Daniel Vernaza. And so, thank you all, and that is my report tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to Associated Student Government Reports, and start out with Irvine Valley College.
All right. Thank you, President Jamal. So, as everyone has mentioned already, my heart and condolences also go out to the students in Parkland. And so, for tonight's report, I only have four things to report. Irvine Valley College's IVC Circle K Club was awarded second place in the Outstanding T-Shirt Contest at the Annual California-Nevada-Hawaii District Fall Training Conference that took place November 3rd to the 5th, 2017. I just wanted to, I want to give credit where credit is due. I'm wearing their shirt right now, so it is a truly amazing achievement for them to have won that, so good, so good job for IVC Circle K. My second item is that ASG of IVC have also begun their election process for the new ASG officers for the 18-19 school year. Currently, each of the candidates are in the middle of campaigning, which will be taking place from February 26th to March 8th. My third report, my third report- My third report, my third report is that our ASG of IVC is currently preparing for our ASG Awareness Day. This day will basically have each committee from student government informing, inform students of IVC about what their purpose is and what their upcoming events are. And that will be this Thursday, March 1. So, that should be a fun event for all the students involved. And then, finally, my, my final report is with the budget hearings. The ASG of IVC Budget and Finance Committee have begun the budget hearing process where clubs, co-curricular programs, and academic departments request funds from ASG of IVC. Currently, right now, we had, we have over 100 requests, which tolls up to $2.2 million. These budget hearings will continue occurring from February 2, 9, 23, and to March 2. Thank you.
Thank you. You have any extra t-shirts?
Oh, I'm sure, I think, I'm sure we do. I can get you one if you need to.
All right, that'd be great. Let's go to Saddleback College.
Thank you, good evening. With ASG, we've been continuing our initiatives in terms of, in terms of sustainability. These are initiatives that are very important to us as students, so we are working with that, and we are organizing a beach cleanup for this coming Sunday at 9:30 at T Street Beach with some other local schools. So, there will be free bagels and coffee for those in attendance, so I invite you all to join us. In addition, we are still working on providing pre, free period products in the women's restrooms and gender-neutral restrooms as well. Currently, those that need them need to pay about 25 cents for a product that we find is not of good quality. So, we are working with facilities and management to see how we can make those products free and of better quality. Like IVC, we are also in the process of elections, so I'm sure we'll be working on those together in a little bit. Additionally, we are also focusing on our homeless student initiatives. We are hosting a pancake breakfast, or excuse me, pancake brunch, this Wednesday from 10:30 to 12:30, and all of the proceeds will go to the Saddleback Emergency Fund. And we are also reaching out to OCTA to see if they can provide free or discounted bus passes for students to get to school. And in regards to the Florida shooting, it's something that our Board of Directors talked about extensively on Friday, and we are very affected by it, and we want to take action. So, we plan to write a resolution and also write letters to our congressional representatives as well. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any requests for board reports? Seeing none?
No.
I didn't see, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't put it down.
Nope.
But a while back, I asked about the progress on school safety and security report, and I don't think we ever received that. Do you remember? It was a report that I asked for on school safety. We discussed, I think they came up and, and just shared, for some reason, they were here.
Did you ask for a board report?
Yeah, I remember, she got it. It was, it was a report on, they did like an evaluation of, of needs, but we haven't had any follow-up on it. And, I mean, in light of recent events, it might be good to get.
Okay.
Yeah, what, yes.
Grace look into it?
More so the war, I know what we have, but what if? You know, how is it going to be implemented and, yeah.
Okay, but if they're looking at, you know, structural changes to the campuses to make it safer, and we're not getting those, I mean, I, we have no idea.
Okay.
Okay.
I agree, it's important.
So, Grace, Grace will look into it and let us know. All right.
Thank you.
All right, so, seeing that we have no discussion items, without objection from the board, I'd, I'd like to move up. Item 7.2, the reports from the Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Foundations, if that's okay with my colleagues. And so, if we could, we could proceed with the foundation reports, whoever was going to go first. If we could do that now, that would be, that would be great.
Where's the? Yes, we have presentation. Good evening. My name is Alyssa Oransky, and for the past two and a half years, I've had the honor of serving as the Executive Director of the Irvine Valley College Foundation. Each year, we come to you to provide you with an update on our past year's successes. We always focus on the numbers because those are the measurable and tangible things that we can share with you. It's very easy to show you the bar graphs, the charts, the, all of that, which we are going to do, but we're also going to share with you a bit about the changes we've seen in the foundation. So, before I put up the first slide, I'm going to just take a moment to paint a picture of where our foundation was in June of 2015. Our fundraising was flat, that's the tangible. We did not have a very good reputation, either in the community or even on campus. Our faculty, staff, and administration did not want to come to our offices. We, and we had a board president who was, he could be rude, aggressive, he didn't respond to board members' requests. And the kicker for me was, we were $60,000 in debt. This is the situation we walked into two and a half years ago. So, I paint that picture you, so you can really see the big, and that was due to our pro-IVC match and the way that it had been done. So, that's what, what was going on in June of 2015. So, now to take you through, I'm going to show you the snapshots, the charts that you like to see that show you some of the numbers, and I'll continue to tell the story as we go along. So, this is the pie chart and the numbers of our contributions, our events, our revenue, and the district's support, and we do greatly appreciate the support that the district provides to fund all of the salaries at our foundation. It enables us to truly focus on fundraising for the students and programs. This is another chart we always show you, which outlines our financial position. I think the most exciting part is down at the bottom, where you can see that our net assets went up over $300,000 over the course of the year. Needless to say, that makes me very happy. And it includes investments, which is both our endowment account and our general investment account of over 2 point, almost $2.5 million. So, needless to say, we are moving in the right direction. Here's the one that I'm really proud of. This is a big one. If you look, you can see that from 2014 to 2015, fundraising only went up about less than 5%. Last year, we increased almost 30%. That's a pretty remarkable number, it's unheard of. So, why, why did this happen? How did this happen? Yes, we were asking more, but something else had to change. Because when you become a fundraiser, one of the very first lessons they teach you is that if you don't have the trust of your donors, you have nothing. So, my team was to my team, my employees, and the board, I was already doing this. But my employees were told that this is how we're going to be. We're, we're going to be a professional office, we are going to be responsive, we're going to be trustworthy, we're going to be outgoing. And through that, but we also know that we can only reach so many people. Three people, we're a three-person team at this point, and we were when I started, we can only reach so many people. There's only so much time in the day, only so many doors we can open. So, how do we expand that? Well, we, we did some fun things to engage our faculty, our staff, our administration, and our community. I brought Laser the Pig, as we call him, with me tonight as a visual. We created piggy banks last year that actually the tail goes up as you put money in, so they're kind of fun. We had a lot of fun with him because we knew, in order to engage people, yes, we had to show them that we were professionals and we were trustworthy, but we also had to make it fun. So, we created the pigs, and they have attended quite a few events, they're seen all over campus. There were contests to decorate them, and we really saw people kind of bringing them in, and we had contests about how much money you can collect in your pigs. They've been to music concerts, they've been all over. So, we had fun with that. We also changed the way that we did pro-IVC. Both the funding of it, when I walked in, they were, they were funding it by a percentage rate, not based on the money that had been in, in the account. We now only fund pro-IVC based on what we have raised the year before in our general fund. So, we take a piece of that pie in order to create the pro-IVC match for the following year. So, we're no longer going into debt, and we've seen that match go from $10,000 my first year to $30,000 last year, to, it's actually up to 45 for this year. So, we made that change, and it's a lot of that that really drove that number to go where it was. But to help tell the story, I reached out to some of our faculty members to share their thoughts with you because they can tell you from a different perspective. So, the first quotation I have is from Lisa Alvarez, who is an IVC English faculty member, and I am going to read this to you. "So, over 25 years, I have supported students at IVC in a variety of ways, including occasional donations to the scholarship program. As a former scholarship student myself, I know how life-changing such support can be. But as a donor, I also know how vital it is for the foundation to be sound and smart, to grow strong relationships across campus, community, and especially beyond. Under its new leadership, the IVC Foundation has done just that, and I am pleased to deepen my own involvement and commitment at this time." So, this is something where we're excited, we're hearing it, people want to come to our office. We seem to get a lot of visitors on Friday because I bring in pastry every Friday, so that adds a little bit to the fun. But they come, they know they're going to be greeted with a smile, they know we're there to be helpful, and we're going to try to find a solution. So, that leads us, Lisa mentioned scholarship support, and last year, our scholarship support did increase. What's, I find more interesting is that we're going to continue to see, what, what we did more was the, beyond the scholarship growth, is we increased the endowment, which is on the next page. Oops, sorry. The endowment. We, last year, we had donors start the new Helen and Peter Maxwell Endowed Scholarships with a $75,000 gift. That is the largest single endowment that we have that came from one couple. So, we have endowments that are larger, but they were donated to by many people. This was a 75, it was a $50,000 gift and a $25,000 gift from the same couple within a year. And that doesn't count their initial $10,000 gift to be part of the Foundation Awards Dinner and to fund some annual scholarships. So, while the scholarship growth, I wish it had been higher, or this, I, I feel that we, I know that we saw more growth in the endowment, which will help our students in perpetuity. You can see it went up 30,000, 30% last year, and while the market was good, clearly that was more than the market. So, that goes on to our next quotation, which is Professor Kurt Meyer, who I saw, oop, he's sitting right over there. So, working, he, he is also another one who is engaged with us, and I, I've seen, I don't know if he's seen, but he represents many, quite a few other faculty members who were really hesitant to come into our office, and now they don't hesitate at all, which is fantastic. But he wrote, "Working with IVC's Foundation Executive Director and Staff reminds me that I both serve and am served by a larger community. Whether helping me fundraise and process checks, thank donors, and congratulate student scholarship recipients, or bring the community to our college and our college to the community, Alyssa, the Karens, Julie, and every other member of the foundation team always handle everything with, with utmost professionalism and friendliness. They play a vital role in bringing administration, faculty, staff, students, and members of our larger community together. They are a foundation for much of our best shared work." So, we do continue to work together, and actually, our colleges work well together as, as well. One thing that neither of us put in the report but should be noted is, for those of you who attended our events last year, you probably saw that our support staff, our classified staff, worked each other's events. So, because it, it really helped, because they know all of your faces, and they know many of your faces, so it really helped to get things going, and we're doing that again this year. So, significant accomplishments, there are some good ones in here. So, for our new significant revenue, we had a $50,000 grant come in to support the Veterans Initiative. I referred to the $75,000 to establish the Maxwell Family Scholarship Endowment, and $13,950 for equipment for the testing center. In August, I know you heard about a gift that came in for almost $250,000, but that is obviously, well, that'll show up in next year's report. We significantly increased faculty and staff participation and fundraising through pro-IVC challenges and through the creation and distribution of our Blue Piggy Banks. Our sponsorships for the FAD, which is really what we have the most control over ahead of time, and the FAD is the Foundation Awards Dinner, increased by 18%. And we also saw an increase in the participation by IVC faculty and programs at our Astounding Inventions event. So, I know a lot of you really like numbers, so I'm going to go back to numbers for a minute because this also tell, oop, there's one more. We established seven new endowments. So, this chart really tells you about the activity level because you think, okay, it's just more money, but it's more than that. We are now, from five years ago, we're now processing, we're, we're working with 59% more donors. We receive 61% more gifts. We have six, with almost 70% of, an increase in donor, of new donors of 70%. Our five-year consecutive givers have gone up from 38 to 85, which means those are people who have donated five years in a row. And of course, we hit the million-dollar mark, which was very exciting, and we actually hit it in three ways in one year. We raised $1 million, our endowment went over $1 million, and our investment was over $1 million, and that's a first for us. So, I'm going to end with one more quotation from Dr. Stephen Rochford, Professor Emeritus, and a member of the Board of Governors for the Foundation. And he writes, "IVC is enjoying an exciting renaissance of the foundation due to leadership, staffing, a restructured Board of Governors, clarity of mission, and, most critically, professional and friendly interactions with the college and public. Interactions that have resulted in positive feelings, a belief, and energetic support and participation from each of the college's constituent groups." So, we went from a place where people were kind of afraid to walk in the door because they really didn't know what to expect, to a place where people want to come. So, I know Winnie has a story to share with you as well, so I will now turn the microphone over to her.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yes.
Well, well, I said, thank you, Alyssa. Well, I think we'll just save the questions till after Winnie presents.
Okay. Thank you, Alyssa. Well, I've been with Saddleback Foundation for three months, and so, I'm going to start with the other end of the spectrum, which is to paint a picture of the future, and then I'll go back and give you some information on what happened in fiscal year 17 when I wasn't here. And so, I have a little bit of a struggle with some of the information, but I will do my very best to convey what I think you need to know and what I think everyone in the audience likes to know as well. So, I came to Saddleback College without any community college experience. Forty-some years of experience in fundraising in Wisconsin and across, recently across the street at Mission Hospital. And so, one of my charges was to look at community colleges in a different way. And my tendency as a human being is to say, well, who says we can't do this? And so, I really have looked at what can happen at Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College if we take our blinders off, if we don't stick with some presumptions. And so, my picture, the picture I would like to paint for you is what could happen here at this wonderful campus, as well as the campus at Irvine Valley, when we have the rich resource of community locations that have so much space and so much opportunity for involving our communities in the way, in ways that they are not. So, what I'd like to see happen is, so I'll now focus on Saddleback because it's what I know the best. I'd like to see that in 10 years, this is the hub of South Orange County, where people are coming here because it's a place to go. For people to be educated, regardless of their ages, because we know in the Emeritus Program, we have people older, and of course, younger students, and as we look at the Pathways Program, things that can happen with students in high school. So, one, to be educated, as well as to look at this campus as a place to come, as we involve people from the community who develop a relationship with Saddleback College and what is happening here, so they want to be involved, so that there is an understanding of our interdependence as students and as members of this community. So, that's my picture for the future. And now, what I'd like to do is go back and talk about what has happened in fiscal year 2016 and 17 at Saddleback College. So, these are, this is the first graph of our income during that period of time, and you'll see the, that 87% of the income is from contributions, events, and revenue. And of course, the revenue being the largest is a combination of scholarships, realized and unrealized capital gains, and some sales through some of the and unrealized capital gains, and some sales through some of the college activities. And of course, you see the district support for some of our staff. So our total income was 3.3 million. The next is our financial position, excuse me. And here are numbers you can look at in a graph, or probably in a more interesting way for you, and I'll just pause and ask you to look at that, and if there are any questions about this, we'll go back. Really the same information you saw with the income. And then the expenses, most of the program support to Saddleback College is about scholarships, and I really like to call those contributions to the college, not expenses. And we'll be, Richard and I are going to be talking about that. The general administrative and administrative cost is our operations, and then the fundraising cost has to do with a lot of the events, such as the veterans and some of the other college fundraising events. Our change in net assets was a little over $700,000. This is a quote you can read from a scholarship recipient, one of our 789 scholarships that were given last, during that fiscal year. And while she has a great story, imagine the story of 789 other, or 788 other scholarship recipients, and what, what a difference one scholarship can make for one student. In her case, she was able to go back to college and she didn't have to drop out, she didn't have to work full-time, and she didn't have to survive paycheck to paycheck. Here's our total scholarship giving in dollars for 2017, and you can look at the growth and see tremendous growth, particularly if you look over the years. And our endowment growth as well, to 7.1 million. Most of those endowments are scholarships, some general, and then some named scholarships such as the Gross family. Want to touch on the gala, real good things that happened at our gala in, in that particular year. We raised 87% more than we did in 2016 with the record net proceeds of 176,000, and our plan is for even greater success this year. What I'd like to talk about instead is what are, what are our events about? They're really often the place where people enter or start contributing to any organization, and in this case, we had obviously a nice net proceeds, but what events are for is to sometimes get people to something for the first time, and then when they're there, to have a good time, to know why they're there, know that in this case, they're supporting Saddleback College, that money is raised and that people want to come back. And then the next part of it is, for us as professionals, is to think of this as perhaps the gift is coming to the gala. Maybe it's betting or bidding on an, an item. Maybe it's coming again the next year, but over time, there's more interest, and maybe they're serving on a committee or the board, or maybe giving for an annual program, or maybe a campaign such as for the sports stadium, maybe later a major gift or a planned gift. So oftentimes, an event is the entry for people to get involved in any organization, and of course, in this case, Saddleback. Our significant accomplishments, raised more than 3.4 million in revenue and gifts in kind. Not too many gifts in kind, but most of those were for products or equipment at the college. We awarded 789 scholarships totaling 567,000 for a total of 817,000, including the 250,000 endowment contributions from the Grosses. I've already spoken about the endowments to 7.1 million and five new endowments. 81% more than last year. The gross income was 290, the net was 176 versus at 98,000 the year before. We relaunched the president's circle of 1,000 and up annual donors and raised 62,000 in gifts and pledges. We partnered with Fine Arts, Veterans, Emeritus Institute to raise 51,000, and this really is a place for a lot of opportunity. We raised $75,000 from grants. And interesting, I included this for something with the hospital cabinet recently, and I decided to add it to this slide probably a month ago. And certainly tonight, we're hearing about the power of, for change that as a community finds what it cares about or discovers what it cares about as, as related to what's happened in Florida and really in our country. So as we look at these two students who were at our scholarship awards ceremony, we see students who are, who knows? What I'd like to ask you to think about is, these two students, are they scholarship recipients, one of whom maybe is going into the workforce next after a two-year program? And maybe one of them is going to Stanford or Harvard, might get a PhD, might go to UC. We just don't know for sure, but I'd like you to think about the students who are here who have so many opportunities, and we're very proud to be supporting them in their early education as they go forward in their lives. So as we think about the power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about, we know that that is happening right here in our country. And as I think about what can happen with Saddleback, as people here in our community understand what happens at this community college, there's no end, there's no limit to what we'll be able to accomplish in generating not only financial support, but the expertise and the time people will give to support our students and the benefit to our community. So with that, I'll finish, and I know you have some questions.
Thank you very much. Thank both of you. Give me a second here so I can get my screen back. And do we have any requests for questions? All right, I have a few, a couple. So I just, I just, in terms of the budget summary, I want just a little clarity, and if you go back to the slides, so I, you had, I think, contributions, events, revenue, and district support, and then income on top. The way I would usually view it is revenue and then the different sources of, of fund development that take place. So I don't, I was a little confused by that.
So am I. Yeah, I really tried to work with our accountant to understand. I do have some notes, so maybe I can look at my notes to make sure I have it straight. So you're looking at financial position?
Right. Well, I don't have the slides anymore in front of me, I guess I could, I could pull them up, but you had a, I, as I, I usually view nonprofit reports, budgeting, as you have revenues, and under revenues, you have events, contributions, endowments, but you had income and then revenue as a separate category.
Well, it's, it's the same.
Oh, so your, your income and revenue are interchangeable?
Yeah, they're the same. Yeah. Yeah, no, but they're different. So the revenue, because ours is listed the same way, and this is very confusing, so since I've been around a couple more years. So the revenue is money that comes into the foundation that is not philanthropic gifts. So for example, when we sign, when, when the Pepsi contract was signed, funds would come into the foundation that ultimately, for both colleges, went into the president's discretionary fund in the foundation.
All right. Because you have revenue under revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't know why it was created this way, this is how it's been, but that's how it's a little bit different.
I have a little bit of explanation here.
Okay.
So what I have is the contributions and events are what you would typically think of as scholarships and other contributions, and events are the events we know about. The other revenue is the real, mostly the realized and unrealized gains. And why this is set up this way, I'm not so sure, but that's what I understand.
Okay, it's a little unusual, so maybe something that we could, we could look into. So obviously, the district is providing valuable support to both the foundations. Is it your sense that that support will be critical going forward to both the foundations?
I mean, answer, you want to answer.
Is that a yes from both?
Yes, I think it will be critical in my experience. It's very important. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Where do you, either of you or both of you, where do you see the real, where you see more opportunities for growth? Obviously, the staff, Alyssa, you have three, Winnie, are there five?
Five.
Five at Saddleback. So is an area where the foundations should focus more on? Is it, is it in the endowments? Is it corporate grants, corporate funding, the events, individual donors? I mean, you can't do everything.
You can't do everything.
So where do you recommend we try to scale a little bit?
Our biggest focus should be on our individual donors, our major gifts and our endowments and our planned gifts. Corporations, the, the fact that they throw at us all the time is that 5% of all, of all philanthropic gifts come from foundations, 95% come from individuals and private foundations. So since we can't be everywhere doing everything, we should focus on where most of the money is coming from, which would be private foundations and individuals. I'd love to see at some point, both of us, either of us, share a planned giving officer. I think that would be tremendous. The other reports that we see when they're talking about the philanthropic future is that that's, that's where the most money is going to come from, that's going to be the biggest increase, and that requires some specialized education. I know enough to know when I need to call for help with planned gifts, I know the basics, I know how to get them started, but we, if we, if, if the district really wants to explore that area, it would definitely be beneficial to have an employee overall. I agree with Winnie, Winnie completely, that our events, the, the biggest part of it is to really be the face to the community. They're not great fundraisers. If you triple net them, we lose money. So if you factor in the costs of the, of the staff who work on it, you lose money. And that's very typical across, across organizations. We report the net without factoring that in. I do think they're important. I think Astounding Inventions brings an incredible number of people to Irvine Valley College. We estimate that it's about 2,000 people each year. It's not going to show up in money right now, but clearly, that's something that's beneficial to the college and will help us in the future. And then our gala is really for, to bring in the adult side of the community because the Astounding Inventions, at least half of the people we see on campus are, are little ones. So that's really our way to engage the, the grown-up community. So I will, I think we should continue to do that. We actually cut an event when I started at IVC. We, we don't do a golf tournament anymore, and I think that's actually been beneficial for us. But to, to kind of put it in a simple way, you know, we worked, we worked really hard this year for Astounding Inventions, and again, it provides much more than dollars. Our total fundraise in the 18-year for Astounding Inventions was, I believe, 25,250. I had lunch with the Maxwells, they handed me a check for $25,000. Which one do you think required more work? So that's my favorite area. Frankly, I think it, it's so exciting, you get to help the donors realize their dreams, you get to impact the students and the programs. So yes, if I could choose where we focus the majority of our time, absolutely, individual donors.
Okay.
I'd like to thank trustee Witt, who sent an article to me yesterday about the opportunity for individuals in community colleges. I also have read a, a piece on the 15 top-performing community colleges in the country, and only about-
The foundations, the foundations.
But yes, foundations, yes. Only about 50% of the colleges report giving from individuals, and the article trustee Witt sent yesterday indicated that we're missing the boat here, and we are. That's one of the blinders we have, and there's, the other blinder I'm seeing is that typically, community colleges are raising between 3 and 5 million dollars a year, and I think that we have so much more potential than that, particularly in this area of the country, where we have so much wealth and we have so many students, we have so many people. So there's much opportunity for us to involve individuals in early giving, major gifts, and planned, planned gifts.
Yeah, and I also think, and maybe trustee Lang can comment, I mean, the elimination of the state and local deductions on our tax forms provides an opportunity to raise money because charitable giving is still allowed, unlimited in terms of the deduction. So that might be an opportunity as they raised a lot of our taxes, that the opportunity to give more to charity, I think, is, is there, so you'll want to look at that. And my final question is, what, what do both of you think? What should the ratio be of funds raised for, per total staff at, at each foundation, or at a foundation or at a nonprofit? What, what's the right multiplier for staff at, not foundation, and in terms of the expectations for dollars to be raised? And I know you know the answer to this.
Actually, I have avoided that question at Saddleback because of the hot topic it is, so I just decided that is not something I'm going to concentrate on. I want to go back to what you said earlier, which is about the tax consideration, and then I'll answer your question in a different way, and then I'm sure Alyssa has some more to say. The three main reasons why people make contributions to organizations is belief in the mission, financial stability, and the leadership of the organization. Taxes are a consideration, but it's down the list. For a few people, it's important, but mostly, it's belief in the mission, it's the leadership, and it's the financial stability. We have that here. And so again, no reason why we can't expect to be incredibly successful. The way in which I think about the percentages has to do with the cost of fundraising, and each kind of program we do has a different cost to it. Overall, the national standard should be around 30% and of the dollars raised, and every organization counts that differently. If it's an event, it's typically supposed to be 50%. If we're using direct mail, it might be a loss for a while, but ultimately, that in total, it should be about 30%. As far as the staff is concerned, I truly have stayed away from that topic, knowing that it's been a difficult issue, and the best thing I can do is focus on raising dollars and getting people involved with the college.
Thank you. And I don't, received my many questions, me, I don't support what you're doing, I'm very supportive of both foundations. Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Now that you've forced me to make some comments here, usually, I, I have a lot of the comments that I make within the Audit Committee meeting when we meet with these folks and the other folks that represent the foundation and the district. But just a couple of comments. First of all, the, this is a sort of a standard format in terms of the way things are reported, a little bit in a condensed fashion, which you would expect. I, I know the level of district support has been a, a topic in the past in terms of whether the foundation should or shouldn't be more self-supporting or not. In, in one respect, I think it's important that the, the colleges do have some, you know, money in the game, if you will, resources of their own, that they're investing in the foundations. And in addition, obviously, donors want to donate to an organization not to pay for the overhead of that organization. So I think that's another, maybe compelling reason for the district to want to provide other kinds of resources to the foundations as well. The other, I think the, trying to address some of the other comments that you made, trustee Jamal, in terms of proper staffing level, I think all the comments that, you know, both Winnie and Alyssa made, I think I can certainly relate to in terms of what their focus has been on and should be on, and because that, that does jive very much with my experience in this area as well. I, I will say that having sufficient staff is always an issue in this game, and I think, you know, community colleges are, we're, we're going to be constantly fighting that battle. The best that you can hope for in this area, in my opinion, is that you can encourage and entice some volunteers to be able to join your board that have good professional backgrounds that may be able to help you and complement you in some of those areas that, you know, you wouldn't be expected to have the, all of the knowledge and experience in, such as planned giving. I, I hope you, we could get to the point, frankly, where we could hire a planned giving specialist, but maybe part of the issue there is to take some baby steps and try and encourage volunteer- But maybe part of the issue there is to take some baby steps and try and encourage volunteers to be on, on your board. Attorneys, CPAs like myself and so forth, people that have experience in that area, in which you could turn to, to get some of that advice and help when, when that comes up. I think that's probably about all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
About the subject. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Witt.
Yes, I just want to share something. Winnie and I had a meeting not so long ago. And she was talking to me about, do I know any rich people? I know that, but it got their attention. Okay, everyone, I'm going to say it now. Do you know any rich people? And I'd like to know too, have you thought that Saddleback College has been good to you and your family? I've been here 42 years, and I want to tell you, Saddleback College has been very good to me and my family. And yes, I worked very hard for it, but I don't want to have to die for them to get some money. I think as we give tidings or give whatever, and if it's even $100 a month, it would be a gas card for one of our homeless, or it would be something else. I'm just here to say that we have to look into our own hearts. There's 50 of us about in this room. And when is the last time we really donated pure money, not just for a banquet or whatever, to the college that has supported us and our family? And I haven't gone to that real rich person yet because he's in education and I serve on his foundation. But I will. But just the other day, I had the president of my association come to me, thinking that we're talking about topping trees, but he asked me to serve on our foundation, homeowners' foundation. I thought, one more thing on my plate, and I thought, aha, I'll do that. I'll put you on my plate, but now you're going to be putting me on yours. And I asked him about Saddleback College. He didn't know anything about Saddleback. But guess what? If you look at that person, his wife's a nurse. Ta-da. That's where I'm going to go with it. And maybe the people that you know, you know their personalities. What do they want? What do they want to see in their community? It's a community event. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Witt. Anne Marie, can we do, or have we ever thought about doing voluntary payroll deductions that can, that for the foundations? I think we're allowed to.
We do.
We do.
Okay, they're both doing it?
Foundation table. Yeah, we do it that way.
All right.
Yes, actually, I, it's funny you asked me that question. I was just talking to, or not talking to, asking vice chancellor Visca-Chill if they hand out a sheet on onboarding about voluntary deductions. And I was kind of suggesting to her that that could be something that we could add to the onboarding process for new employees for both the two campuses, whether or not they want to do the payroll deductions.
Okay, good.
We would love that. That would be fantastic. I think we need to update the form a little before we do that, but it would be great. We, I was surprised when it wasn't there. And even though people may want, not want to make a donation as they're just getting on-boarded, at least it plants the seed that we, that each of the colleges, they do fundraise.
Should do it. The county does it. The county of Orange does it. They, when, when, as employees of the county, you have the options. They list a number of nonprofit organizations that they could, you could voluntarily deduct a portion of your paycheck to at each month. Obviously, our foundations aren't on it, but it doesn't mean we can't do it within our own district. Thank you. Thank you both. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Trustee Jay.
I just wanted to thank them for such wonderful reports. You guys just did a great job. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you both.
I just would like to say one last thing, if I could please, and that is, because I'm the new kid on the block, three months into this. No, I did not ask if you know rich people. That's not how we think about it. But I just want to add what a privilege it is to be part of this community college. It's not something I knew anything about. I've told many people the story of going down Marguerite and turning right to go to Mission Hospital for 18 years. I never came on this campus. We can't have that happen. This is a wonderful campus. There's so many good things going on. We need to have our community know what is here, and that's what we'll be working on. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. Alrighty, so, we're going to move on now to the consent calendar. Do we have any polls?
I have one.
Trustee Wright. Okay.
5.5.
Trustee Wright, 5.5. Trustee Witt.
5.13.
Okay, any others? Trustee Witt, is that?
5.13.
Okay. All right. Okay, we have motion from trustee Lang to... What's that? I don't see it.
Yeah, it's up.
It's up.
Oh, I apologize. A motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Wright to move the balance of the items. Any further questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Balance of the items are approved on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Trustee Wright, we're going to go to 5.5.
On, 5.5, on exhibit C, I have a, I just have a question about exhibit C. This is the Saddleback College Study Abroad Program to Spain, and I certainly support that. I just have a question about exhibit C. It says, educational tour, field studies, travel contract for the spring 2018 Ireland program. I wonder why it said Ireland rather than Spain.
It is. There's two of them, two different ones. There's two different travel programs, Spain and Ireland.
Yeah, but they were two different agenda items.
They're two different.
They just copied and based it from the Ireland one.
Oh, is that what they did?
Yes.
All right.
Is that? This is under, I know this is under 5.4 for the Ireland.
Right. Unfortunately, it does look like there was an error in placing the correct documentation behind Spain. There are two different agreements, ones for Spain, ones for Ireland. So this particular exhibit is incorrect, and your board would pack it, and I apologize for that.
Good catch. All right. We have motion. Any other questions? We've got a motion from trustee Wright, second trustee Lang to approve 5.5. Let's go ahead and vote. Item carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 5.13, trustee Witt.
Yes, if you look on page five, no, page four of six, exhibit A, please go down to iHeart Media Incorporated Advertisement Agreement and Advertisement Campaign of Course Offerings for one month from 2/19 to 3/18 for the cost of $10,000. I don't know if you guys remember, but when we had the presentation of combining the radio stations, it was asked, will we still continue to be able to advertise our courses on the air? And just enlighten me, $10,000 for one month advertisement? I'm quite surprised at that, offering our own courses on a radio station that we own. I understand that we're in combination now with the North, but I'm, I'm confused here. Yes, it's $10,000 for one month.
Is anyone here able to comment on that from, I don't know, from Saddleback? Gregory, is something you'd have to look into?
I, thank you. I, I will look into it. It's not a, it's not courses, it's a full online program. And I can have a full explanation for that.
Okay. Who?
Were you going to answer?
Was someone going to go respond? Yeah, if you could come to the podium, that would be, would be good.
This is Julie Lantier-Bandit, Chief Marketing and Public Information Officer.
Sorry, I was on my way, and then he said what he said, so. This is $10,000 to support an online advertising campaign with iHeart. So it's a web streaming campaign. And we are advertising our online courses for the second eight-week of this semester. So it's not specific courses, it's a online course offering campaign. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, but I still have a problem for paying $10,000 for courses that they said that we were allowed to advertise. When they said that, I had no idea that we had to pay for the advertising.
So iHeart Radio is, I was unaware that they said that we didn't have to pay for advertising.
They didn't say that we had to, or they didn't say we didn't. I assumed since we were combining, we were uniting with another radio station, and it was our radio station, that we'd still continue to advertise our courses.
So can I, are we, are we talking about advertising on the third-party station? Is that what we're talking about here? Our iHeart is a separate entity.
But aren't we part of that?
No.
No. Oh, okay. So it's an iHeart campaign online, so it's a web streaming campaign. So if you're listening online and you fit our demographics within very specific zip codes, then you would hear our ad online while you're listening and be able to click on our banner ad. It's proven, based on our web traffic, that it does increase our web traffic to our site. And we're driving everyone to the apply page. And it is in regards to the second eight-week online course offerings for Saddleback.
So we are tracking the metrics of this?
We are absolutely tracking.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Trustee, oh, you have another question?
No.
I was just thinking, if you listen to Pandora or Spotify, there's ads that run if you don't have the premium service. And so this is ad on their platform. Yes, we have a radio station that plays through iHeart, but we don't control what iHeart charges to advertise on their platform.
Okay.
That's what it is.
Can I just ask you, is that a lot? $10,000 for one month?
No, actually, it's a really good deal based on the targeting that we have, yes.
All right.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we need a motion, we have a motion from trustee Lang. We need a second. I have a second from trustee Jay. Any other questions on 5.13? And by the way, this, let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. For some reason, the speakers are not clearing from my screen, or request to speak, but I'm, I'm just doing it manually. So, it's all right. I've been, been doing it. I don't know, I don't think we can fix. All right, let's move on to, to general action items. 6.1, agreement for software development services, NUDSEC. Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Witt. Any questions?
I have a clarification on this item, on their status where it says funding. The 1.5 million is the total amount of Saddleback's college-level UP grant of the 385,000 involved in these projects. 100,000 is coming from existing project funds from the E-transcript account. And the remainder is coming from Saddleback College's Level Up Grant. I'd like to thank Saddleback College and President Anderson.
That's a helpful explanation. Thank you for that. Any other questions or clarifications? All right, let's vote. Item carries through a unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. 6.2, board policy revisions, except for review and study. Let's get the, we've got a motion from trustee Wright, and a second from trustee Prendergast, and a question from trustee Lang.
Yes. I have a couple of just editing changes that I will provide to the chancellor rather than take the time to go through it on 3,002. Yeah, and then on 3206, just a comment. I think I'm, I'm happy with the crossed-out item in the first sentence, but not sure why we need the underscored item, item at all in the last sentence.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I wrote in my notes as an awkward phrasing.
Right, because we're talking about securing district property.
Right.
So it shouldn't just be limited to the use of the district's financial software system.
It's a great comment.
So I think we ought to just eliminate that.
I agree with that, but is there any explanation for, for the insertion of the last sentences that are tracked in there? Last, the last five, six words? Chancellor, do you know anything about this?
So, I'll just provide my comments to the-
But I agree with your comments, because I didn't, I forgot to forward you my comments, chancellor. I did, it just was an awkward addition to the board policy. Okay. All right, so we have a... It is for review and study, but it's good that he, that trustee Lang flagged it early. All right, so we have motion, second. Looks like no further questions. Let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote.
Keep that if you want.
All right, 6.3, the Marion Bergerson Award nomination, one of our very own, was the winner last year. Trustee, trustee Miltucher.
I get to help choose the winner. So how much do you want to give me?
Well, do you want to nominate one, any one of us to, to be your successor? It is, it is, it is a very significant honor. So it looks like we probably don't have anyone nominated grace, so there's no motion to approve on this one. Let's move on to 6.4, the initial proposal from CSCA, chapter 586. We have motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Nope, let's go ahead and vote. The item carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.5, the district initial proposal to CSCA, chapter 586. And we have a motion from trustee Lang, and a second from trustee Jay, and a question from trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, in light of our discussion earlier this evening about catastrophic leave, was that something that can be added, or?
So that's a board policy, and that revision will be moved forward sometime in the future through the Shared Governance Committee that oversees board policy.
Okay.
That particular revision.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Item carries by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.6.
Board president, those two items were information-only. The vote comes at the next hearing in March. I apologize.
All right.
So those votes
So we would-
need to be negated. It's information-only for the first agendized initial proposals, and then in March, that is when the hearing will be, it would, it'd be an open hearing, and the, and the board will vote at the close of the hearing.
So we need to go back, I guess, and, and table the, the previous votes?
I, I think the votes are nullified by the fact that it's only, it's only on the agenda as initial, so I think you're good.
All right.
Would it be better served in the sevens in the future, so we don't vote?
I, because I, under general action items, we normally have to take action, or if it's a public hearing, then we have a public hearing. But yeah, I think maybe it should have been under 7.0. Correct, correct, that's-
Oh, okay. Approval of the review and study. Okay.
Well, I, I don't think these are for review and study. They are, okay, then we did, we are correct to have voted on it.
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
Okay. All right, and that leads us into another review and study, and that's the initial proposal from our district to the POA. 6.6. From, I'm sorry, from, from the Police Officers Association. Correct. Sorry about that. And it's not on my screen. There it is. All right, we have motion.
For review and study, so I've approved it for review-
So I approved it for review and study.
Correct. That's what we're doing. So we have a motion from Trustee Milchker and a second from Trustee Jay. Any question on the proposal from the POA to accept for review and study? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a 7-0 Trustee yes vote and Student Advisory yes vote. 6.7. Yes, Trustee Lang.
So there's no requirement that the district counterpropose. Both college presidents and their leadership teams have been spoken to in terms of what, if any, initial proposal the district would want to put forward. At this point, the district is happy with the contract, and we're going to negotiate the initial proposal that has been identified by the POA. You're welcome.
Okay. Yes, and I think you have an update on 6.7?
Yeah, on 6.7, before you vote by law, I need to make sure that you're aware of there's two educational contracts, a classified educational administrator and an educational administrator...I'm sorry, both of them are classified administrator contracts for Dr. Richard Stordy. That contract that the board will be looking to vote on, that salary schedule. Dr. Stordy was brought in at Range 25 with a Step 6, with an annual base salary of $213,372. Separate from that is the placement onto a contract, Devit Kachatrian, the Vice President at Irvine Valley College. And Mr. Kachatrian will be placed at Range 25, Step 7, an annual base salary of $224,028. Thank you.
All right. So we have a, we do have a motion to approve the item. Trustee Milchker and a second from Trustee Wright. Do you have any questions about this item? All right. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a 7-0 Trustee yes vote and a Student Advisory yes vote. Now let's move on to 6.8, Classified Personnel Actions.
The request to pull an item has been waived, so please proceed.
All right. We have motion from Trustee Prendergast and a second from Trustee Lang, and a question from Trustee Wright.
My question on 6.8 is, let's look at page 6. Item D4. It looks like there may be a mistake there. It says, "From reporting to the Director of Information Technology Administrative Services Systems to begin reporting to Director of Information Technology Academic Systems."
One's administrative systems, one's academic systems.
Okay. Why isn't it the same as the 2 and 3?
I believe this is a correction from a prior board...
That's a correction from last time, when this item was approved by the board last time and had the incorrect reporting structure on it. That's been fixed in this item.
Okay.
So I guess I think this might be the item where I had a question. I think, just to maybe a clarification, Dr. Rockmore, I think it has to do with the reporting structure to the Executive Director of Marketing. I think it's under 6.8, where it seems to be a substantial shift in the number of people reporting to her, and that's going to be reduced significantly. Is that...is it not under this item?
Number 5? I think it's number 5.
I was just wondering about, it seems like a fairly significant reporting shift. And so are her responsibilities going to stay the same? Obviously not, because there's a lot of people who are not going to be reporting to her now. Correct?
Yes, that is correct. So a number of people will be reporting to the Director, but that does give the Executive Director time to expand her duties as well.
Is that the reason for the reduction in direct reports, so she can spend time on some other things?
Yes, yes. They are absolutely on overload in that department.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and vote unless there are other questions on 6.8. I think someone hasn't voted yet. That's okay. Okay, the motion carries, six Trustee yes votes, one extension, and a Student Advisory yes vote. Now on to 6.9, Annual Report on First-Year Probationary Faculty. Can we get a motion to approve the item? A motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Jay. Any updates, any...
No updates, it's a break.
No questions, let's go ahead and vote on the item. The motion carries by a 7-0 Trustee yes vote and a Student Advisory yes vote. 6.10, Annual Report on Second-Year Probationary Faculty. Motion from Trustee Witt, second from Trustee Milchker. I see no updates and any questions. All right, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by unanimous Trustee yes vote and a Student Advisory yes vote. And finally, we're on to 6.11, Annual Report on Fourth-Year Probationary Faculty. Ratified tenure, so this is a big vote. We have a motion from Trustee Jay, second from Trustee Witt. Any questions? All right, let's go ahead and vote. And it's unanimous Trustee yes vote with the Student Advisory yes vote. Congratulations to those who are going to be granted tenure. All right, so we're gonna...no, we're not, actually. 7.0, Reports. We have the Annual Report on the Third-Year Probationary Faculty Continuation of Tenure Track Status. And we don't have any report on this, do we?
It's information-only because the third-year contract is for years 3 and 4.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. We already had the Foundation's Report. 7.3, Staff Response to Public Comments. I didn't see any. 7.4, Saddleback College and IVC Speakers. 7.5, South Orange County Community College District Facilities Plan Status Report. Trustee Lang. You gotta turn on your mic.
Probably for Brandy, I suspect. On item... Let me just see here where it was. There was an item on page 13 of 14 that had to do with mapping and condition assessment. And at the top of 14, it talked about placing this on hold to request additional funding. And I was just curious about what additional funding we were looking for for this item.
So originally, so originally, last year, we went to the, through the kick-and-bark cycle, and we asked for the, usually it's seed money when we're first getting into a project, enough money so that we could evaluate the project and determine what the costs would be. So we did all of that. We went out for a bid on it, and the costs came in. We now understand what the project costs are, and we'll go through the kick-and-bark cycle, asking for the funding on the remainder. And the mapping project is going to help us with both of our planning and our projects moving forward. What it will do, will map the utilities, the existing utilities, as well as develop a condition assessment on those utilities. So that is, we're moving forward into projects or identifying specifically a utility project will understand the current conditions.
You wouldn't be interested in sharing with us what the costs came in at, would you? Or is it too premature?
It's, no, I don't think it's premature. I can tell you. We had originally assigned $900,000. The proposal came in at $2,009,000. So we need an additional $2 million. And again, that will get you information on all your existing utilities. I can assure you, those costs will be saved over the course of the next five, 10 years as we're moving forward with projects and unforeseen circumstances aren't any longer unforeseen.
So would you foresee that as being a high priority for basic aid funding for this next cycle?
I would recommend it as a high priority, yes. And then the committee will be making the actual recommendation later.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to 7 points. I'm sorry, Trustee Wright.
I have a question about the A task building. I was noticing that the unallocated amount is $26 million, $26-plus million. That has not been allocated yet. And again, you want to award the contract in April? When will we have...
So are you asking me first the question about the $26 million?
Right, right.
We wouldn't award a contract to... The historic position of the board has been that we award no contracts unless the contracts are fully funded and awarded. So we wouldn't be awarding a contract until after that funding cycle occurs, the kick-bark funding cycle. That's one, and then...
And when's that going to occur?
We're in the process. We in fact have a meeting tomorrow. Our second meeting is tomorrow, where we'll talk about the various projects. It comes to you, to the board members during the June board meeting when you're reviewing the tentative budget. And after the tentative budget has been reviewed, then we can begin to execute contracts.
Okay, because I know that the people are very anxious that they get started in that building.
Yes, as are we all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Trustee Wright. Let's move on to 7.6, Monthly Financial Status Report. 7.7, Quarterly Investment Report. 7.8, the OPEB Trust Fund. And 7.9, Pension Stabilization Trust Fund. And a question from Trustee Lang.
Yes, my question on this item was, I noticed in looking at the exhibit on page 2 of 2, that we have not put any money into this fund since December of 2016. And just curious what's going on here. Thanks, Kim.
We had approved the original budget as another $12.6 million for this fiscal year, and that money was actually transferred earlier in January.
Ah, okay, so it came in in January of 2018?
Yes.
So that's why I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, so it's just this fiscal year. We didn't get around to it till after the holidays.
Good answer.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we're now on to reports from our administration and governance groups, starting off with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try to be brief. I want to highlight that there's a increased cooperation between the IVC and Saddleback College Academic Senates. June McLaughlin and I meet regularly to talk about college and district matters and how we can work better together. She could not make it here tonight, so I get to report for her that both college senates are doing wonderfully. But there is a shared concern about safety on the campuses. It's taken far too long to get the door locks installed, preferably automatic ones. Their value had been demonstrated at Santa Monica College in their shooting in 2013. My colleague with the Faculty Association may elaborate on this as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Faculty Association, Mark Blethyn.
Good evening. Yeah, unfortunately, the recent tragedy in Florida has once again highlighted concerns that we have over the safety of our students, our staff, our faculty, and our administrators at both our colleges, not just where I particularly work. About three years ago, the faculty reached out to administration to see if we could come up with ways to more adequately secure our educational spaces in the event of some sort of tragic occurrence here. But to my knowledge, in that time, not a single door on either college has been retrofitted in any way to make it more secure. There are simple solutions, and they do exist. Yet, any action has been delayed by our own bureaucracy that we have in this district and certain policies that just don't seem to be meeting the needs of our safety concerns. For example, just Capistrano Unified District, in the same time, has outfitted all their classrooms with a security system for their doors. And they've got a much wider range of campuses, sites, and doors to be able to secure. As I have been told, at UCLA, in the summer after they had that shooting up there recently, just in the summer after, they were able to secure every single door on their campus in an educational space in a three-month period. And so it seems like we should be able to do more. You know, we can't continue to allow our internal processes and policies to prevent simple solutions from being implemented in a timely fashion. Fortunately, as a full-time faculty member, just to illustrate one point, I have keys to my buildings and classrooms, and if I needed to lock my door in an emergency, I certainly could. Now unfortunately, my primary classroom, I'd have to walk outside into an exposed space on the exterior building in order to do it, and then walk back inside. There's no way for me to do it from the inside. That just seems kind of ridiculous. Unfortunately, it's the policy on both campuses not to issue keys typically to part-time faculty, although they teach about 50% of our classes, which means that in an emergency, 50% of our classrooms don't have someone with a key inside to actually lock the door. I truly believe that the district administration and everyone here's, the primary concern is our safety of our students and staff. I don't doubt that for a minute. I just don't think that's possible. But sometimes it seems, you know, we get caught up in these policies that just don't make sense, and no one wants to listen. The fact is, is that we can't take, we can't concern ourselves more with the equipment inside the rooms than we do with the individuals that are inside those rooms. And I just know that we can do better by our students and our staff, and I know that we can get something in place quickly. We just need to get going and not get in our own way. Thank you.
Thanks for that, and I'm just wondering, I think we agree, we shouldn't have policies in place that put our students or faculty or staff at risk. Does the administration, I mean, we normally don't do this, but do you want to, I know Trustee Wright would have a comment, but... I mean, what policies are inhibiting this? Do you want to, I mean, in particular?
Well, the policy of not giving keys to part-timers because they're afraid the classrooms, I don't know, they're going to leave them open and...
And are other community colleges just providing keys to part-time faculty?
I'm not sure I can speak to all of them, but everyone that I've, I was a part-timer in a couple of years before. We always had keys about everything.
That seems like something we should look at. Okay. All right, Trustee Wright.
IVC has what means to lock the doors from the inside. Don't you on most of your buildings?
Yes, we do. I was just sharing that with my colleague here.
Right, I know you do.
You won't be able to see this, no doubt, but this is a rather inexpensive device that mounts to the base of the door.
Right.
It has a key, if you will. It's similar to a peaton, if you are familiar with rock climbing. And so it's in a little box right up by the handle of the door. You open that, and that key drops right down in. And then there is actually one, and I can't remember if it's the door opening in or opening out, but for one of the two for ADA reasons, it actually brings this device up high enough that it can't be touched with the wheel of a wheelchair.
Right.
So as far as I know, all of the classrooms are retrofitted with that. And it's truly meant to be a stopgap until Mark's very valid comment here on electronic locking system that both colleges have been working on for quite a long time.
Okay. Trustee Witt.
Mark, did Capistrano, you said Capistrano School District? Did they use the electronic system? Because I can only see that to be really cost-effective in the long run.
My understanding is they did not. I, my youngest son is still going to Capo High School, and they, the principal there said that all their classrooms, they have a blocking device. I'm not sure if they're using the same one that Dr. Rockmore was alluding to, but a similar internal blocking device that they can quickly and easily secure the doors from the inside and make a safe space.
So that would be, that would be appropriate for part-time, full-time? I mean, it's, is that something that you want to use, want us to see as the priority?
Well, I'm no expert in the systems, but the fact is, we have people that are expert in this, and they should be able to come up with a solution. It shouldn't take three years to do it, when we've had these tragedies occur over and over and over again. I mean, I don't understand what the delay is in securing our campuses. It should be a high priority. And if it's a, if it's a funding thing, then the colleges need to tell the district, this is a funding thing, we need to have this done. I can't imagine anyone up there turning their back on... I can't imagine anyone up there turning their back on something that's so important. I know you wouldn't. That's not, doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
President Jamal, may I speak? I realize it's totally out of the order on this, so I just don't want to do it. I want to point out that the IVC implementation is not throughout all the doors. This was one of the conversations I had with faculty. I'm not going to put the first-year tenure track faculty members on the spot, so I don't want them to reply in any way, because it puts them in an awkward position. But it hasn't been fully implemented. I just wanted to clarify that, because that was a direct question I asked to June McLaughlin just last week. So, I and another colleague I know over there. So, it may be in some of the buildings, but it's certainly not throughout. I hate to contradict the college president over there, but I wanted to clarify things because of the miscommunication.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
There are lots of different, inexpensive ways to do this. And just in our district, it's a piece of foam that slides in an apparatus, keeps the door open, and then when you want to lock it, you just pull it shut. But you have to have a key to lock the door in order for that to be effective. And so, yeah, you don't have to go electronic, but, you know, ultimately, you could, but it just, there's, there's so many different ways to do it, but being able to lock the door is paramount.
So, interim chancellor Fallo, you only have a couple months left, but maybe we can take a look at this item, or you can delegate someone, and we can take a look at it.
Trustee Jamal, we are looking at it. I don't have a statement for you tonight. I hope by the next board meeting, we will.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. I don't know other questions on this, and I think June already, you spoke for June, so we'll move on to vice chancellor of Technology and Learning Services.
Only one thing, fresh off of carpal tunnel surgery, I'd like to thank the board and this district for our excellent medical and health insurance programs.
I'm glad you're recovering. And vice chancellor Viscachill.
Yes, thank you. With a board vote tonight, we will welcome a new executive director of human resources. I'm very excited for Kim Wittis to begin. She will begin approximately on March 19th. Kim could not be with us today because she has a daughter, who we hope, if all goes well, will have a kidney that's flown from New York for a kidney transplant tomorrow. But Kim Wittis comes from Grossmont Quyamaca Community College District, highly regarded, so much so that I've received a number of calls as to what will they do without her. We will welcome her as our new executive director, and she comes with a tremendous amount of experience. I also need to acknowledge the first board meeting for my colleague here, Ann Marie Gabel. I will also, as often as I need to, remind her that I have four months of seniority on her. Thank you.
Very good. And on that note, vice chancellor of Business Services, your first report.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, so forgive me here. First, I would like to, again, thank the board for the opportunity to serve South Orange County Community College District. It's, I'm really having a lot of fun. I'm starting my third week. I'm trying to learn.
Oh, just wait. Just getting started.
Yes, I'm trying to learn as quickly as possible. I do, a couple items that I wanted to report to the board on, the first one being the new funding formula. I don't know how much you know about the proposed new funding formula, but in the governor's budget for 1819, they have proposed a completely new funding formula away from what we affectionately call SB 361. And this one has three different components to it, where there's a base grant, which is kind of along the lines of SB 361. That'll be 50% of the funding. And then, the other two categories are brand-new. So, there's a supplemental grant that's 25% of the funding, and that is tied to the number of Pell recipients within a cohort, as well as the number of the California Promise Grants, or I'm not sure if you still call it the Board of Governor Fee Waivers here, based upon those counts. The third category is what they're calling a student success incentive grant, and that is worth, again, 25% of the funding, and it will be based upon the number of degrees and certificates awarded to individuals, students, as well as a incentive bump for the number of ADT degrees and awards provided to students. There's a hold harmless clause in it, and what that hold harmless clause says is that districts, and I know this doesn't really affect South Orange County Community College District as a whole, since we are basic aid, but it will change, or could potentially change, the funding formula for how we fund the colleges, because we do our budget mechanism using the state model. So, we will be having discussions moving forward, probably summer, fall, if we want to change our budgeting model here on our campuses to mirror or mimic the statewide funding model. So, that's something we're going to be looking at. I will say that there is a State Chancellor's Office Advisory Work Group on Fiscal Affairs that is, consists of 12 chief business officials throughout the state that is working on the funding model with the Department of Finance and with the chancellor's office. I am the vice chair of that committee, so I will have a say into any changes that could potentially be made. I don't foresee a whole lot of changes to the new funding model, but we will have a say, and I will be representing South Orange's interest in that funding model. The other thing I was going to talk about was safety and security, not with a lot of in-depth, but I did do a preliminary look, talking with both presidents, on where are we as a college on safety and security. I can report that each college has either installed, or they're in the process of installing either electronic door access and/or lockdown mechanisms. Each college has either installed or in the process of installing cameras on their campuses. They both have building designators painted on top of each building, so that any air support can determine what building it is and easily identify the building where help is needed. They both provide 24/7 coverage by the police department and will provide escort services if requested by anyone who calls. And then, they both offer trainings and workshops on safety and security throughout the year for the employees of the district. So, that's kind of a preliminary look of where we are with both campuses as far as safety and security.
Thank you for that. I think trustee Lang has a question for you.
Have we done any sort of preliminary modeling to see what sort of an effect the new state formula will have on the college budgets?
Yes, we have. And so, the Department of Finance actually did that modeling when they came out with the formula, and they were using our fiscal year 1617 as their model. So, based upon the metrics from 1617 and from 1516, depending upon which metric it was, it looks like that South Orange would receive about $5.2 million less than what they would receive under the existing formula.
Okay. And how would that break down between Saddleback and Irvine Valley College?
We haven't done that yet. One of the, I would say frustrations with the new funding model with some of the metrics that the Department of Finance pulled, isn't easily recreated by district researchers. So, I have been working very closely with Denise here on this campus to see if she can recreate the numbers. She's working with the chancellor's office to try to do that. Once we can get to the number that the Department of Finance used for each of our metrics, then we'll be able to break it down by campus, so that we can look at it that way.
I think that would be something that all of us would be very interested in.
Yes, yes.
I agree. All right, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our vice, no, we have IVC Classified Senate.
I just have one thing to report. This month, we had our fundraising event, where we raised about $1,000 for student scholarships, so.
Great, congratulations. CSEA president, Scott Green.
Thank you, sir. Just one brief comment. A week ago, I had a get-together with a high school classmate that I graduated high school in the Northeast, and he moved down to Florida. He lives 20 miles from Parkland, and he told me that there were so many things that were missed, and one of the things that was missed was the oversight, because apparently, there had been money appropriated to be able to take care of the problem of mental illness. And yet, those funds were misappropriated, and the state did nothing. And so, and he living from 20 miles from Parkland, the people there know it. And yet, the details of this whole tragic incident has been pretty much muffled and buried because of the fact of where that place is located, and the fact that they are afraid that people would not come to Parkland and buy homes and things like that. My friend is a real estate agent, so he should know. But the one thing that should not always be something that has to be repeated is that human life should never have a price on it. And the reason being is because every human life is invaluable.
Thank you very much. And finally, Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Thank you. I just have one statement. I'm going to mirror what a lot of people have said tonight, and my condolences for the people of Florida and those affected by it. Safety and security of our campus is and has been a concern of Saddleback College staff, and I hope that we take steps to enact real and tangible solutions to secure our campus, which includes not just physical security of our facilities, but ongoing planning and training.
Thank you very much for that, and I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of the victims and survivors of the Stoneman Douglas massacre that occurred in Parkland, Florida. Thank you very much.